Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall for this October 7th Planning Commission meeting. As we do every month, we'll start off by reading the consent agenda items. Denise?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item one, approval of September 2nd, 2015, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, September Platts. Item three, 3335, 2015, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential District to the REC Recreation District for allowed forms located at 6601 South Hemmingstone Trail. Item four, 3456, 2015, rezone from the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density and C3 Commercial Community Districts to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density for allowed forms located at the southeast corner of East 41st Street and South Veterans Parkway. Item five, 3494, 2015, rezone from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar and C3 Commercial Community Districts to the C4 Commercial Regional District for allowed forms located at 1600 to 1700 West Russell Street. Item six, 3499, 2015, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the I1 Light Industrial District for allowed forms located at 504 and 528 South Van Epp's Item seven, 3500, 2015, rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at 3210 South Summit Avenue. Item eight, 3504, 2015, rezone from the LW Live/Work District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District for allowed forms located at the northeast corner of West 22nd Street and South Ellis Road. Item nine, 3510, 2015, rezone from the O Office District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at the southwest corner of West 53rd Street and South Louise Avenue. Item 10, 3288, 2015, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Imani Ridge Edition located southwest of Great Bear Recreation Area. Item 11, 3503, 2015, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Graystone Heights Edition located at the southwest corner of East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue.
All right, thank you Denise. I believe we have a request to move item number seven to the regular agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that has any objections to any other items on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, first I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And then I need a motion to move item number seven to the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we will vote on the amendment. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. And now we will vote on the items as amended. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, item number seven is moved to the regular agenda. If you are here for items number one through six or eight through 11, you are free to go at this time. Enjoy your evening. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda, so I need a motion to approve the regular agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we will start with item number seven on the regular agenda.
Item seven is 3500, 2015, rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at 3210 South Summit Avenue.
Jason Bieber with Planning and Building Services. The applicant here is Dick Dempster representing Graham Automotive. They are proposing to rezone roughly .17 acres from the RD1 zoning district to the C2 commercial district for future motor vehicle sales and display area. The parking lot is required, a 10-foot front yard setback. They do have a concept plan that's in front of you now. The concept plan does indicate that the majority or the proposed rezoning site will be encompassed by future parking for their motor vehicle display spaces. A level C buffer yard will be required on the north and east sides of the proposed rezoning. This buffer yard does include a 20-foot setback, a 2-foot berm and 4-foot fence and 40 units of landscaping per 100 lineal feet. The proposed rezoning does meet the shapes who follows comprehensive plan. The subject Graham dealership development is located near the corner of two type 1 major arterial streets, South Minnesota Avenue and West 41st Street, which in a developing area of the city would be classified as a subregional employment center. This employment center encompasses roughly 80 to 160 acres and this proposed commercial district will still be well within the amount of commercial acres allowed at this intersection. Further, the proposed commercial use will not creep any farther into the neighborhood than what's already established to the west of the site. And then finally, the required level C buffer yard should provide the necessary transition from the proposed motor vehicle display area to the existing single family houses on the north and east. If the rezoning of this property is approved, the applicant can develop the lot for additional motor vehicle displays areas. If the rezoning is denied, this parcel will continue to be zoned the RD1 and the existing single family home will be rented out. Because the subject application is consistent with the shapes who follows comprehensive plan and the required buffer yard should provide the necessary land use transition, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks Jason. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jason? All right, is the applicant here? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Dick Dempster, 415 South Main. The opportunity presented itself to Graham to purchase this house. We've got plans to build a new building on the site so that they can put more salesmen and that sort of thing, so this frees up a little bit more room for parking. We have no desire to take over the neighborhood. But like I said, the opportunity presented itself, we took it and we're here to rezone the property.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Commissioners? No? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Abby Pegone and I live at 2727 South Summit Avenue in Sioux Falls. I've been on that corner first to the south and then to the north for 41 years. My concern is, and it sounds like everything's ago, is that particular house at the end is a very... It's a nice home. It's an affordable home. Billions has gotten 16, which I know they were sold, and that's good. I'm a Realtor. Selling houses is a good thing. But I've noticed the creeping of automobile lots all around an area that I moved into, which had a school and a few other things many years ago. And I know change is important, but I would ask that people look at the fact that we're losing affordable housing and it seems to me that the creeping, and I heard, it made me happy, that creeping will stop eventually. I just want people to realize, we've lost 16, and then if we lose this one, that's 17 homes in a neighborhood that was called South Sioux when I moved there. And we're getting it from the north coming down and we're getting it from the south going up. And it just seems that this neighborhood, smaller park now, Kia is on one side. It just seems we have an awful lot of automobiles. And is there somebody going to build something else besides automobile parks in our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Madam Chair, could I ask Mr. Dempster to come back for a question? Has any consideration, I've asked this question before in other issues too, but has any consideration been given to preserving that home, moving it off rather than demolition?
I don't honestly know. I'm certain that the Graham would consider that, gifting it to someone.
Not necessarily in writing or in the plans at this time to... Is it scheduled for demolition? Is that the...
It's not... Well, yes, it is. I mean, it's not on a schedule, but the house doesn't have any place in our future plan, let's put it that way. I will talk to them about offering it to someone who wants to move it.
Madam Chair, just another alternative is donating parts to Habitat for Humanity. So the Billions are... People are coming in that need windows or doors or other parts of the house, so that might be an option as well.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Jeff Schmidt representing Planning Staff. I'll try to be really quick. I believe City Council did a study on this recently internally and they asked, based upon Billions and others, if there was an opportunity to remove, and there isn't. There's not an opportunity to move the houses to another location. It's too expensive, the costs are too high to place new houses. Council had the same question, they looked into it. It's infeasible. So unless someone gives a large cash donation to take care of it...
You pointing at me?
Whoever wanted to donate, again, like Mr. Dempster said, if someone wants to move it, they can, but it's just infeasible.
All right, thanks Jeff.
So you traveled that road. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll move to item number 12.
Item 12, 3274, 2015, rezone from the O Office District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at 6201 South Minnesota Avenue.
Good evening, Diane DeCoyer with Planning Staff. Oh, apologies. Yeah, item 12 is withdrawn, so you guys need to make a motion, take care of that.
All right, I need a motion to withdraw item number 12 from the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number 12 has been withdrawn.
Item 13, 3279, 2015, conditional use permit in the RE3 form for accessory outdoor storage located at 1525 West Burnside Street.
Okay, once again, Diane DeCoyer with Planning Staff. The applicant here is requesting a conditional use permit on one acre in the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District with an RE3 form to allow an accessory storage unit within 25 feet of a DD form. The applicant is Jeff Murphy and the owner is Burnside Industries. The property is located at 1525 West Burnside Street, which is east of Northwestern Avenue. The property is located adjacent to manufactured housing, which is DD6 form where a level B buffer yard is required. The buffer yard includes a 15-foot total setback and 30 units of landscaping for each 100 lineal feet. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit for accessory outdoor storage because his vehicle storage will be located within 25 feet of the DD6 form to the southeast and the storage area is larger than 10% of the total building square footage. With a conditional use, he will be required to provide a hard-surfaced area where his vehicle storage will be located and provide a 6-foot-high opaque fence to screen his storage. Because the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the screening and buffer yard required to adjacent residential, staff recommends approval for the conditional use permit. I can answer any questions you have.
Thanks Diane. Any questions from commissioners? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Justin Gibson. I'm here representing my father, Jeff Murphy. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. I live at 2800 East 33rd Street in Sioux Falls here.
All right, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not as far as I know.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions? No? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item 14, 3507, 2015, conditional use permit to allow an electronic message center in a residentially zoned district located at 1400 South Duluth Avenue.
Jason Bieber again, representing Planning Staff. This is an application by Brian France, who is representing Zion Lutheran Church. They are looking to place two 3-foot by 10-foot electronic message center signs on the existing church property. Each of these signs, one will be placed adjacent to West 22nd Street on the east side of the building facing Minnesota Avenue and the other one will be placed on the west side of the building facing South Duluth Avenue. It is located at 1400 South Duluth, just west of the 22nd and South Minnesota intersection. The proposed signs, as I indicated before, will be 3 by 10 with all 30 square feet encompassing the electronic message center. Just some quick, we'll run through some quick standards for electronic message center that are in the shapes Sioux Falls, or excuse me, shaped places zoning ordinance. These electronic message signs limited to displays which are gradual movements but including but not limited to the dissolve, fade, scrolling, or traveling. However, some of these sudden movements is prohibited, including but not limiting to blinking and flashing. Electronic message or graphic display may be changed at periodic intervals by gradual entry and exit display modes. Provided messages and animation shall not be displayed in periodic intervals by various modes such as fade. And then they also are required to be equipped with automatic dimming controls that automatically adjust the sign's brightness in direct correlation with the ambient light conditions outside. Numerous places of worship within Sioux Falls have installed electronic message centers, however, a majority of them are located on arterial streets and oriented away from residential uses. Staff feels that the proposed 30-square-foot EMC sign on the east side of the building facing the office commercial uses along South Minnesota Avenue would be compatible with adjacent land uses. However, staff feels the electronic message center sign on the west side of the building that is oriented towards South Duluth Avenue and the residential uses there could cause some incompatibility issues with the proposed size of 30 square feet. Therefore, the size of the sign may remain at the 30 square feet as proposed by the applicant. However, staff does feel that only 15 square foot of that sign should be dedicated to the electronic message center and hopefully this should eliminate any incompatibility with the sign with the adjacent residential uses to the west. Because the subject application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following condition: The electronic message center portion of the proposed sign on the west side of the building be limited to a maximum of 15 square feet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Steph?
Jason, oh, sorry, Madam Chair. The smaller sign on the west side of the building, isn't that facing the residential?
Yep, that's what we're trying to get, the one on the west side that's facing residential, to have the electronic message center portion of it to be smaller than the one on the east side.
Okay, my directions must be, west side is towards Minnesota. So that's the one you want to be smaller?
No, the east side is towards Minnesota, the west side is towards Duluth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong side of the... Thank you.
That's okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks Jason. Would the applicant please come forward?
My name is Brian France, representing Zion Lutheran Church.
All right, and state your address as well, please.
1400 South Duluth.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, the changing the west one down to 15 square feet, I guess, I mean, we can probably work with that. I think the way we lay out the messages on those, we're going to have a little bit of some conflict, you know? We'll have to design it for one side and design it for the other, and I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work, but we'll work it out, I guess.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, Brian, do you have any hours of operation? Is this going to run 24 hours a day, this message board? Or are you going to close it down at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night?
I guess we hadn't really discussed what we were going to do as far as, you know, they can be dimmed and such like that, and yes, they can be put on timers to turn off at whatever time needed. I guess realistically, past about midnight, it's not really needed anymore, probably, but...
Be an energy savings.
Right, yeah. Well, they're LED anyway, so they don't use up a whole lot, so...
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I've got a question. What have we done in the past for when it butts up to a residential property? We've put some type of hours of operation. I know we've done in the past.
Are you asking staff to come forward to answer that question?
Previously, we have approved some conditional uses for electronic message center signs. Those are under the previous ordinance and they did have hours of operations. We are trying to get away from putting a condition for hours of operations because it's difficult to enforce, because we don't have anybody to go out there at 10 o'clock to make sure it's off. And if somebody complains about it, then we go out at 8:00 in the morning and it doesn't really work out very well for us, so...
Thanks Jason.
Well, I have a question for the motioner. Did the motion include the recommendation as outlined by staff?
I would stipulate as such with the staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve with the condition as stated. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item 15, 3511, 2015, conditional use permit in the RE3 form to allow an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment with 500 feet of sensitive use located at the southwest corner of East Arrowhead Parkway and South Foss Avenue.
The applicant is Bryant Soburg with Common Land 2. The rezone for this property came to you guys a few months ago, so you may be familiar with it. Again, the property is located to the southwest of Arrowhead Parkway and Foss Avenue and sits adjacent to single family residential to the south and west and just east of a future BMP on the property. The applicant is relocating the existing casino to the south of the property to allow for a bank to be constructed in its place. The conditional use permit standards for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment requires the following. Number one, the establishment must have all parking spaces within the onsite parking lot in close proximity and facing the entrance. Two, lighting should be considered to provide illumination for security and safety of parking access areas. Onsite lighting plans need to be submitted for review and approval. Three, soundproofing may be considered to prevent noise and vibrations from penetrating into surrounding properties. Four, a security management plan shall be provided to the police department. Parking is shown on the site and is shown to be in close proximity to the north side of the building. Lighting is not shown on the site plan. Soundproofing should be considered to prevent noise trespass to adjacent homes. No comments were provided from the police department, but the applicant is reminded that a security management plan is required. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, the staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. I can answer any questions you might have.
Thanks Diane. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Just to clarify Diane, the... This facility was what was circled in red earlier?
The new facility, the new building that was circled in red, correct?
Thank you.
All right, thanks Diane. Would the applicant please come forward?
Hi, Bryant Soburg, 330 North Main.
All right, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, you know, as you can see on the map, we're up there in the upper right-hand corner. Already, we've been there for nine years. We feel we've been good, you know, neighbors to our closest neighbors there. So now we're maybe, as you know, redeveloping the whole site and just putting a building back a little farther to the south and we want to work with our neighbors and our closest neighbor. We plan to put up, you know, all the buffers that the city requires and also there's, on the other map, there's a retention pond that helps separate, you know, to our closest neighbor. And then also, we can sure think about putting up a fence right to the south of that building, you know, to help buffer some, you know, whatever noise there might be. So, yeah.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Brian?
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right, I will, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item 16, 3099, 2015, initial development plan in the S2 Institutional Campus Plan Unit Development for the USD Research Park located at the southwest, pardon me, southeast corner of West 60th Street North and North Marion Road.
The project before you is an initial development plan for the University of South Dakota Discovery District. The property is 160.57 acres and zoned as an S2 PUD. An institutional campus PUD allows construction of business and community facilities. The goal of the research district is to provide resources and talent in a physical infrastructure to support and attract research and innovation based on businesses. The property is located south of West 60th Street North, east of North Marion Road, west of North Career Avenue, and north of West 54th Street. East of Career Avenue, the property is currently and will remain zoned I1 Light Industrial. The proposed plan includes research laboratories, office, classroom, commercial retail, hospitality, and residential. The BCF3 Business and Community Facility Form allows for buildings of unlimited size, multifamily residential, and commercial uses under 25,000 square feet upon approval of a final development plan. The applicant has indicated commercial retail at the intersection of the north and south type 1 primary streets in the development. Due to the retail proposed on the first floor of the buildings of this intersection, the applicant has requested a reduction in the setback requirement. In lieu of a 10-foot requirement of the front yard, the applicant is proposing to provide a 4-foot front yard setback for these buildings at this location. The applicant did not specify land... The applicant did not specify landscaping signage and the number of parking stalls for the development, but will be required to meet the minimum standards for the zoning form for each building at the time of a final development plan. Final development plans can be reviewed and approved administratively. If the plan varies by more than ten percent, an amendment to the initial development plan will be required, and the applicant is required to come back to planning commission for that approval. Because the subject application for the USD Discovery District, S two Institutional Campus PUD complies with the policies and design regulations of the Shape Places Comprehensive Plan, and is consistent with the regulations of the requested PUD district, staff recommends approval for the request. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? All right, thanks, Diane. Would the applicant please come forward?
It's pretty massive stuff.
Good evening. Lyle Pudwell, landscape architect with Confluence, five-twenty-four North Main. I'm representing the owner, Rich Nazir, on the project, bringing you forward today with the initial development plan to kind of take the next steps towards the development of this exciting mixed-use project completed in, earlier this year. The owner, along with their consultants, completed their master plan to generate and set the motion forward to create a research park out here that will be dynamic in its nature, including research business, hospitality, residential, retail, something like, a place like no else in Sioux Falls at the time. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, Lyle, I'm curious, you had requested, or your team had requested, reducing the setback to the four-foot around the central intersection. Could you describe what the theory or the design impetus for doing that is?
Right, absolutely. With the, with the Main Street corridor, as it's described in the master plan document, they're really trying to set up a dynamic streetscape similar to what is existent on our own Phillips Avenue right now. They see that corridor as having street frontages with shops and businesses, kind of at that consistent spacing where it has its own life daily and nightly amongst that. In order to do that, within the S two zoning, we weren't allowed, we're not allowed in the S two zoning with the existing uses to have that zero setback. It's only in the RE six that that zero setback is allowed. So we are looking for that exception in order to, in order to fit that, that type of development and that type of situation to this neighborhood within, in the Discovery District. Our work and, and the request has gone through a lot of channels to do this. We've had a number of meetings with Diane and the Planning Department, and have included the engineering staff in on that as well. The traffic study for the area is well underway, and that has been considered as well as we looked at setting up that type of condition.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, did you use another community as an influence for this design?
Community, I guess, maybe Rich could speak to that. I know that they, they compared a lot of models when they looked at setting up the Discovery District as far as how to, to build the framework, and those models both looked historical and with current trends. So I think what, a lot of what you're seeing in the master plan and with the initial development in front of you today is, is kind of the forefront of those trends as far as the live-work environment that's existing in the research parks today.
Would you like Rich to come forward? Hi, Rich.
Rich Nazir, President of USD Discovery District. We worked with the master planning team of Arc Inc. and Perkins &amp; Will, and Perkins &amp; Will was really our resource for designing this type of development, and they do that not only throughout the United States but globally. But yes, Innovation Square in Jacksonville, Florida is an example of this type of streetscape and innovation district, and it's actually a trend emerging now within existing research parks, including Research Triangle Park in North Carolina, and Cummings in Huntsville, which is a thirty-three or thirty-four hundred acre park, where now they're going back in and interjecting this exact type of development into that mix because they're actually not able to attract the companies and the researchers. So, to Lyle's point, we are kind of at the forefront of this, and if we would have designed this even just six or seven years ago, probably wouldn't have incorporated this type of development, but this is the trend both nationally and internationally now for these types of developments.
I have one more question. Do you plan to stage this development?
Yes, so, we are legally only able to develop eighty acres initially through state law passed in two thousand and nine, I believe, and the first phase we will build out from university center and the roundabout headed to the west, and we'll hopefully build the first phase of road and utility infrastructure going west and then up to Annika, to the, or up, what would be Annika, up to Sixtieth Street to the north will be the first phase of development.
Madam Chair, I'm curious, it's a discovery center. Just exactly what are you planning to discover?
Yes, well, hopefully success, first of all. But basically, it's, it is really a mixed-use innovation community with the primary activities being focused on research, science, technology activities. So our master plan breaks out, you know, for eventually an entire eighty-acre development, of which roughly seventy, seventy-five percent would be science and technology business, science and technology research activities. The other, you know, thirty, twenty-five to thirty percent would be supportive things like amenities, like a coffee shop or fitness facility, and those sorts of things. We've been talking to companies about first buildings, and about the ten companies we're talking to, all but one is really in the human health space. So because of USD being the medical school nursing program, and our large healthcare systems in Sioux Falls, it seems to be our primary opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Rich, what an exciting project. Wish you all the best of luck. What is your timetable? When will you be starting to move some dirt out there?
Assuming everything goes well with this process and some additional regental items we need to address, we actually have a million dollars that is available to do phase-one infrastructure. We're in the process of also applying for an Economic Development Administration Infrastructure Grant that would allow us to do just a little more work than what we have of the dollars available for now, and would anticipate, if we're successful, spring of two thousand and sixteen, to do the infrastructure first phase, and then building will be driven by securing enough tenants for the first privately developed building.
Good luck.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Seeing none, I, oh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll look for commission action.
So moved.
Second.
If a motion is second, any discussion?
Again, the initial development plans, I really like this process, and it shows that both pedestrian and other points of access are well thought out. It's great to see all the maps that really look at each element of the initial development plan, and I think this has been a great process that has begun with Shape Places. Madam Chair, I'd also echo that and add to it that this seems to me to be one of the more exciting things to come our way in a long, long time, and only good, I can only see good from all of this.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.